You doing a video of this?
Yes.
And you got a little fancy.
Microphone.
Microphone.
What's that?
Nick?
Sink is a sinker.
Oh, in the middle.
Yeah.
Hey, good morning. This is a duly called meeting of the Alamo High School Board of Trustees Goals and Priorities Committee. That, Dana, take it away.
All right, y'all. Going through the November regular election. Sorry, agenda with y'all. We have some fun recognitions as always. I don't know if you all know. She goes by Ms. Ty. She's one of our former class drivers. She's now driving Dan, but we're gonna recognize her at the meeting. Do the video about the connection of teaching in the classroom to our book of the learner. We will honor Sean Simpson that night. Nice. We get to honor the trainer team as well for their national recognition too. That Chris got to share with you when we had our learning walk. And then we'll have a report from our student council. Moving into the presentations or possible action. We will have a trip presentation by Ms. Sanchez, the dance director. The Spurs got a bid to go to nationals this year. This is the first time in my history that they're actually going to nationals.
Where is it?
It is in Florida. Same thing.
Same time?
Not same time. No, it's in March. I don't know that they could actually, that city could hold Santa all this year.
Oh, March.
That'd be a whole lot of screaming.
Right? Right? But I don't end up like. Jimmy's gonna present pillar three. The student welcoming. So Jimmy, why don't you give us just a quick little overview?
Sure, happy to. So you all are well poised because in our last meeting, we talked through big picture about the surveys. So I will do that. General part of how does February feedback fit with fall feedback? I'll talk about that again, but we will also look at the results that you all had in your board book. One thing to note is that I'll be sharing this at DEAC today with all of our community-based accountability. They're the ones that signaled back to us, but they're not gonna be signaling until February when we do student results with staff results and community results. And they have all the information to signal back. How are we doing with high expectations belonging relationships? But I will share the results and I'll share them with you as well. So I'm excited about that.
New course proposals from the high schools?
Yes. Charlotte Doleck will also be with us, sharing out. We do not have any new courses for the junior school for next year, but we do have four for the high school. And they're all addressing goals in their campus improvement plan about expanding student opportunities. So there are two additional AP courses. We've added AP courses under fine arts, but these are two under academics. And so we'll be adding an AP environmental science course. And we've had computer programming as an advanced level course, but it has not been an AP course. Kids have taken it and sat for the exam, but it wasn't formally an AP course. So when transitioning that class to be an AP course, which means the teacher will go through AP training, they'll use the AP curriculum and prepare kids in a more formal way for that AP exam. So that's two of them. The third, you've all already heard a little bit about when we did our CTE. And this is adding a two-credit teach program under the area of education. So think of this like student teaching for high school students. So they'll have a double block. So they'll be at Howard or Cambridge or Woodridge every day of the week. Most likely juniors, probably mostly seniors. It'll start small, hopefully will grow. So that's the third. And then the fourth, Charlotte will talk you through. This is trying to ensure that every student has a pathway to take four math credits in high school. And so it's adding an algebraic reasoning class, which would go in the pathway from Algebra I, Geometry, Algebraic Reasoning, which is more like a logic course, and then Algebra II. So for kids that may not wanna go into calculus or statistics, it gives them a pathway to still get four math credits while in high school. So those are the four courses. I will have Charlotte in the presentation when she's talking about the CTE. Get the weighted funding on there because I think it's 1.43, but I'll have a double check.
I ask you, have you already taken Algebra II? Can you go back to do the Algebraic Reasoning? You can. That's awesome. That sounds great.
That is cool. That's very kind of liberal arts college thing where they let you do logic.
Okay, pause for a second. Frank, can you help get Lisa on the call?
Just a moment.
Yep.
Okay. I'm gonna be over here.
Yep.
She doesn't sound.
She is.
Hi.
Okay, at 2 and 8. 8, 6, 7.
So June zero?
June 8, 8, 5.
June zero? These are the elementary schools right now. What are they, you know, in the classrooms? Why are they there? What program is that?
The kids.
The adult kids, the student teachers.
Oh, when they're.
Like in.
The high school professors.
Oh, I was calling for Lisa Kringle.
The teaching?
Yeah. Is she there?
Oh, hey, Lisa.
Well, this is a good call.
Okay.
Hey, if you can hear us still, okay, then you can go ahead and mute.
Okay.
All right. She's on.
I miss you, Lisa.
All right.
Hey, good job.
Y'all, we are missing an agenda item on school finance because we have to have the approval of our audit. We will go through our audit committee today. We'll have the formal presentation prior to item what is listed as one, which is the public hearing on that first rating. So we will add that on the cut this morning. So add an agenda item number one, which would be the approval of audit. Number two would be the public hearing on the first rating. And then we'll move into pillar seven, which is the fiscal operations system. And so Jimmy and Mike will watch.
You're on page two.
I'm on page two. At the bottom. All right. Okay. Finally, as the presentation would be, the consideration of the resolution for elected bear of Frazel District Board of Directors. And so for the last eight years, allocated our votes to a lady named Sherry Byron. She served four years as secretary, two years as a board member, and two years as the board chair. There are five seats on the board. We try to coordinate with other ISDs so that three of those seats historically sits with ISD votes and ISD representative. One always sits with the bear, with the county commissioner. And I don't remember the fifth seat. Or the person that you know is actually on it. So we need to have a discussion if we're gonna continue to support Sherry or change our votes.
I had no idea we did that.
Oh, City of San Antonio, so it's the bear county commissioner's.
I love it.
So the names on the election. Yeah, let me tell you. So Sherry Byron, again, we've allocated all of our votes. She's nominated by the Commissioner. Obviously, Norma Cabasso, who's Harlingendale ISD, John Fisher. Northeast ISD, Dave Gannon. Northside ISD, Adriana Garcia, City of San Antonio, Aaron Harrison, City of Ole Miss Park, Louis Luna, Harlingendale ISD, Marian Mendoza, City of the Lotus, and Leslie. Okay. Out of Community College District. So we can have some discussion about that now.
So on. For Trish DeBarry, is she, is that the commissioner's seat? So we don't need to give her our support. She'll be fine.
Aaron Harrison would be in Iowa, the next one. Resource for us.
So the problem is, is that if she won't, I mean.
We, oh, I said, I'm looking for Charlie.
Should not be trying to coordinate so that we support someone so that everybody can have a seat.
And it might help and we'll circulate around for you all because when they mail this out to us, they send us this little chart that shows the percentage of votes that each of us entities get. And it's real small, like something like.
We have like a hundred, a hundred and something.
And how do you spell BY?
B-Y-R-O-N.
And she's been the one since.
So how did you choose to import her? I get it. What information could you, you all share with us to what we?
I mean, I can share.
Was that her on the ground the last time I did this?
Yeah, I can share her resume with y'all. If anyone wants to. She's a citizen of Southwest ISD. She's a registered nurse with over 38 years of experience. Like I said, she's had a long standing history on board. She says tax rate should not be a mystery and taxpayers should not be intimidated when they ask questions about their taxes. I don't promise for the praise of the show up or down, but instead that I will strive to make logical evaluations that are understandable to all taxpayers. I also promise to be straightforward and tell the truth. People must have confidence that their taxes are based and determined on an impartial basis.
Norma Cabasso, who's the president of Harlingendale's Board. I know her from the courthouse for 20 years. Hey, guys, we all talk with. Oh, that's.
I kinda understand how.
Because that's what we've got processed.
Yeah. Well, go ahead. For anyone else who has questions on the process, just so that we all.
It's interesting to me that we have a very low percentage comparatively speaking.
Yes.
Yes.
Because we're a small entity compared to the larger appraisal.
That was what I was hoping.
Yeah.
That just doesn't add up to me.
But so that's why we have to join together with someone else.
Makes total sense.
To me, if one of these other candidates wanted us to kind of rally around them, they would have proactively reached out and asked me to visit with my superintendent group to try to coordinate votes like this. And so Sherry has reached out to her superintendent in Southwest year after year after year and said, like, could you take this to the superintendent group so that we can claim one of these five seats as an additional seat? So outside will claim one of the seats on their own with their candidate. Norgans will claim one of them with their candidate because they have so many votes. So the third one, just traditionally, has been smaller district coordinating their votes together to secure that third ISD seat. Does that make sense?
Got it. Yeah. And did you say you've coordinated your district on this already? And then Byron is the one they all.
So it's gonna be interesting because Harlingendale has two books up, you know, to see what they do with their. But in historicates and us and Judson, East Central coordinates with us as well. Somerset.
And we've been happy with. Sure.
And are you thinking of changing? Are you thinking?
This is your also.
Oh.
And so I'm coming to you. I'm asking, you know, that you support. So that we can definitely claim that third seat.
Yeah, I think no matter what, we go with the group so that we're all, we don't waste our votes. And if she's done a good job, I mean, if she's been the name of the five years I've been on the board, I don't know if there's come before.
Oh, she's been it for a while.
Yeah. And if she continues, if we're not gonna be happy, I would say, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
So well, formally, you will read a resolution, you know, allocating our votes. We're good.
And we'll do that at our meeting Thursday?
Yes.
Or if no one else has called you to ask.
No one else has called it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's that agenda. We are recommending an increase in the tuition rate. Mike, you want to talk about that at all?
No, just looking at the formula on how we can determine that, we could go up to a little over $9,800. So it felt like adding $500 this year was a good start.
How many tuition students do we have?
Ballpark, probably around 80.
I will tell you that this year I have been very open to continuing to accept. You know, typically we close it at the beginning of the year. But just based on our need for continued enrollment, I kept it open in the elementary where we have room. Certain grade levels where it doesn't fish us over, so.
Do we have a policy limit?
What's that policy on?
We set it. That's kind of our capacity, the district, of what we feel like we can maintain without.
So I'm just asking, is it a first and first serve or how does it?
It is a first and first serve based on, like I said, class size. We typically close it at the beginning of the year and we open it again at semester for folks to come in secondary lives that.
Be granted a year after year?
No, you have to be.
I mean, why aren't we charging the most we can to get the most out of it? I mean, I know.
It's so interesting. The most we can is 10,000 at this.
No, 9,800. There's a formula.
And we're aware.
95. 300.
And do we, we don't, do we receive state funds for students on tuition or?
No.
No, so they're.
They don't count for ADA or?
They don't count. With the HB3, they disallow us. We, the way they change recapture also changes the way you can handle tuition.
Can you, well, on that, can you spend SIR funds on tuition students?
Yeah, you can spend SIR fund.
And do we know ballpark of what it costs to the average cost to educate a student each year?
Well, the 9,800 is the average cost. It's total expenditure divided by ADA. That's the formula. What we receive from the state, though, is only like 6,200, 6,300, somewhere in that range.
But what is our cost? Our actual cost?
$9,800.
But then why are we doing tuition and losing money? Why are we charging tuition to lose money?
We're not losing money.
Well, you said the cost is 9,800.
9,800, but that's not counting those students.
Okay, so have we ever, and maybe we haven't done this, actually calculated what the cost of educating an average student at Alamo Heights is each year?
I think what you're saying is it's the total expenditures.
Well, I know that, but.
Well, he wants to throw that, you wanna throw in the tuition kids as well.
No, what I wanna know is, I wanna know that we're charging enough tuition that we're not actually losing money.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's my, what is the actual cost of educating a student at Alamo?
How would you calculate that, though? I mean, that's what he's doing is how much do we spend and divide it by kids? And you're, I mean, what would you, what numbers would you use to figure out how much it costs? Because the reality is that class is already off.
That would be the way to do it.
You stick the number in there, so.
That, but that's the way to do it. So if our, if our average cost is 9,800, why are we charging 9,500?
I'd be fine with, I'd have the same reaction as Carrie and Ryan, you know, go up to the max.
Your rationale for it was about invasion. Right, you were, the last time we talked about it. So what's your thoughts about the 9,800?
Yeah. I guess there's two ways to look at tuition students. You don't have to charge tuition, okay? And we'll get $6,400 for them or $6,200 for them. Or you can bring them in and we get $9,500 for them. So to me, we're making money off of those kids that come in. The cost is marginal on these 80 kids. If we took 80 kids out, it's a marginal, I don't even know if it would affect our overall cost of educating those kids. So to pick up $800,000 in addition to what we get from ADA makes sense to me.
But we wouldn't pick up 6,400 for the kid because it wouldn't be here.
No, if, we can accept tuition kids but not, not charge them.
They're called tuition waived kids.
Tuition waived kids. And that way.
Oh, I follow you. But so the state would give us 6,400.
Right.
But now.
And we would have to make up that difference, that third, 3,000.
But since they pay tuition, the state didn't give us anything.
Right.
So effectively, we're every kid, we're making free rent for 27 months.
Right.
Does that make sense?
So to me, it's the sweet spot, like 9,500, I mean, 9,500, 9,800? Like, does that, does that limit folks, that $300? Is a family gonna say $300 more? That's my breaking.
No, because they're coming from private schools most likely that are 20, 20, 30,000 dollars. So a kid.
I mean, I get the idea that the marginal cost is not the full 9,800 compared to the average cost. So I get that. But there is something weird about the optics of charging less.
You can look at it this way. The state's giving the 6,400. The district now is paying a normal ADA kid. We're paying the 3,200 or 3,500 dollars out of the district funds. The tuition kids, we're only paying $300 to educate those kids. They're paying the lion's share of that.
So just an added, I think I recall the conversation was the increase was not considered relative to the max, it's relative to what the current customers are paying.
Right, so current.
And so if you have a, now, you guys can, Mike can keep, you know, reaching it to get the goal of maximizing. But if you're a customer, it's like, what's a reasonable increase?
If you do an increase again next year to get to the max, that's not your, that's, I'm obviously.
And I would tell you that probably 30% of our tuition folks are on climate planes than us. But it is a stretch, I'll put it out there.
Okay. At what percentage?
About 30% is what I would say.
Okay. Think 98 or 95?
I think 98.
No, it's 95.
All right, moving on.
In your book, you would have seen the resolution Frank walked you through, which is the process about appointing Shaq to walk through the decision about her second curriculum. And so this is just appointing that committee in a timeline.
It's the next step in the process.
Next step in the process. Okay, we'll do, then, payment bills, amendment to the budget. Mike, are there any amendments?
Yeah, there's a couple that, our check 41, uh, probably marked on about $100,000 from last year. So they're just two amendments. You don't know if that's made the audit over.
Then we'll go into committee report, state, and we'll get a committee report about the foundation committee next week. Communication Committee, DEAC. Okay, wait, I'm out of line here. Communication Committee is the athletic to DEAC, the SEC, and District State Committee.
But DEAC State, Frank, isn't that wrong?
Yes, tomorrow. I mean, that.
So today is the, I mean, it's today?
Yeah, today.
I was thinking. I replaced today. Okay, so that takes us through the agenda.
All right. We're ready to move on to the policy change. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
All right, so the first policy review could be around FNG level, student care, lights and resources. All right, that's through.
All right, so rather than give you handouts today, I gave you guys handouts last night. I probably would check. Lisa and Brian and I met on on last week.
Or Thursday.
Wednesday.
Was it Wednesday?
That's a blur.
Yeah, because it was the night of the thing. And sorry, I thought I had it.
I'm projecting?
Yeah, I'm gonna project. I'm gonna make sure I have my thing. I was so organized that I lost it. It's the thing that I wrote the notes on, on Brian.
Where did I? No pad? Smart.
It's not in our book, though.
No. Oh, yeah. Anyway, we had a good conversation. I'm waiting for Matthew McConaughey to kind of get it in his mind. And we came up with a couple of key revisions that we felt addressed the issues. And we also talked through some other issues that when we asked the trustees to submit, just kind of general things to consider, we would talk through those as well. And so what I'd like to do first, Ryan, that's right with you and Lisa, is to first go to the documents. So because that's the kind of the, the policy changes that you recommend. And then we'll cover kind of the points. And so I'll make this a little bigger. So this is the FNG that you all remember, that I highlighted the yellow, you know, all the timeliness stuff. And so as we talked it through, here's the first. Would just remind everybody, timeliness and documents were the two biggest things. Then we talked to a bunch of other stuff. And so the first change that you'll notice is a small change, but right here, this one, this long sentence used to stand alone, like it was a separate sentence. And I pushed to the next one because our conversation was essentially, in practice, when somebody files a formal complaint, the informal part, in all effect, goes away because, you know, administrators are spooked about saying anything. They say, well, you got timelines, I gotta follow a process. I can't really talk to you outside of that. And so, but we thought that the policy was kind of confusing because what it said was, we encourage, even if you file the complaint, we encourage you to try to resolve it informally. And we're like, well, that, I mean, that's a neat idea, but in practice, it was confusing to folks. And so that was that one. Now likewise, this entire sentence was deleted for the exact same reason because it gives that false, it's kind of a false impression, we thought. And so we thought that kind of ties it up for second. So essentially, it's absolutely informal process all the way up to Dana if you need to. And then once you go to the formal process, that's what the rest of this policy kind of talks about. That's the first change. It wasn't the first thing we talked about, but it's just the first thing that appears. Now, the next thing we talked about was this notion of documents. So it's not that easy to see when track changes, but there was a number four on here. It said, if you go to level two, all these things include the record. And it said, all documents relied upon. We went back and forth. And in consultation with the attorney, we came to understand that this 1, 2, 3, and the formal 4 essentially are teeing you up for whatever goes to TEA. Because what TEA says is, these are the things that you bring forward to the, to the. The commission? They're not really helpful for our process at level three. So essentially, if we simply define as the record that ends up ultimately going to TEA, it's the original forms of attachments. Anything else submitted, it's a level one. And it's the response. When you get to level three, also you notice, or somewhere else, it says all the audio recordings as well. That this notion of all documents relied upon was unnecessarily duplicative and also confusing. And so we thought, let's just take it out and we're good. Okay.
Stop, stop.
Right.
That, that, that sentence doesn't make any sense.
You're missing a word.
At the conference, a student or parent shall be.
Shall receive.
Shall rely on, shall receive.
Shall rely on, shall receive.
What's that?
Thanks.
No, it's good catch.
Well, that, Brian, uh, if you recall, the other thing was, uh, another concern as we were going through this was that F N G as a policy was set up, um, to help explain to both the administrators and the parents what the process to follow. And the process should not have, like, be weighed in favor of one or the other. And so I think that was one of the cleanups, I think, because the idea, on one of them, it says administrator's gonna add stuff, the parents couldn't.
Right, I mean.
Is that why, y'all are the attorneys, is that why the word shall and not will?
Well, shall is important just because that says you have to do it. But one of the things where this was skewed for the district as opposed to the parents was the district could add information to the record at any point, all the way up to level three, but parents weren't allowed to do that. They were stuck with whatever they did at level one. And so what we did is just even the playing field.
Now, along those lines, I wrote a note, this actually made my decision, but so as we're doing that, Ryan and Lisa, it occurred to me that, and so this is, we need to clean this up somehow, that when we, we're trying to even the playing field, I think in effect that means it's saying that at level two, I could not have conducted a new investigation. And I don't know that we mean that necessarily, because sometimes that's necessary.
And, and I think that's okay to have it, but I think if you're gonna allow the district to add stuff at level two, then the parent has to be allowed to add stuff. I think as long as you treat them both the same, I think that's okay.
So what, what language does that ring? Allows them to add?
Well, we, we deleted the language that specifically authorized the district to add information, but not the parents. So we just took that out. But a problem we have here is we need to just allow both sides to add information to the record at level two.
So like this, it's this right here that I had highlighted?
That, that is taken out.
Okay, so do you, so I should just put it back in?
Well, I think, um, yeah, I, I think to put that language back in is fine. Now, but we say information the superintendent or designate or the, what do we call them, complainant or parent. You just have to make sure that that last provision allows anyone to add.
Is it like right here?
No, no, down at the second time you see it.
Superintendent, comma, designate, comma, or?
Well, what do we call them? Do we call them the complainant?
I just said complainant.
Complainant, yeah, so just add that in there so that they have the exact same opportunity.
And you gotta get rid of the word may.
Well, it was may originally.
Yeah.
Right, it needs to be shall.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, 'cause shall, shall, uh, so the idea was to say, you're limited to these things, not new arguments. But by the way, we're all clear that essentially, you don't, the argument shouldn't change from level one. You can add more information to consider, but the original claim doesn't more over time.
That's, that's where I'm a little concerned about how you this, this language, we say any other information, that's pretty, I mean, maybe without any supporting.
Well, that was, that is the original.
But it's all tied to believes will help resolve the complaint, and the complaint is the original grievance. Because we have that form, what is your complaint?
Can I ask a practical process question? So typically, what, what's the additional stuff that pops up between level one and level two?
Uh, new evidence, for example. Level one says, uh, this coach violated U I L rules. So I go in, I'm, I'm at level two, I go investigate, I get emails from two U I L folks, I think of the rules, that wasn't in the right, level one record. I have to put it in the level one, in the level two record to clarify the original claim.
Pretty much Frank Day deeper on this.
Okay.
More evidence.
Okay. But I do agree with Clay's point, I think where your cursor is, the may should be shall.
Because that communicates, hey, this is what we're limited to.
Right, you don't want to give someone. Yeah, you don't want to give someone the discretion to, eh, I ignored it. If their parents bring forward something, kind of, that, I didn't.
Wait, hold on, hold on, go back to it, just real quick.
So, okay, okay.
You feel okay about that? Okay, that, that was it, I mean, there's nothing.
So then it replicates that the appearance of four that got deleted replicates below, so that's the next deletion, it's the same. And then that's all the change in policy per se.
If you all feel good about this, uh, we can add it to the formal agenda and start this. You claim that.
The effective grievances going forward, point of adoption.
And so are we, we're comfortable that the parents, I mean, the, the big change that we were all looking for with this, that taking out that number four, taking out that the parents no longer would receive the record essentially, I mean.
No, that's not what Clay says.
No, they'll receive the record, we have to give it to them at a time.
When, when I went back to read it, actually, it says, um, it, I, as I read it, it says, the onus, the, the responsibility is on the administrator to take the level one record and to pass it along to level two. It's not on the parent, like, I, this may be why the parents were keeping, I was like, why do the parents keep sending stuff?
Well, scroll up, I'm, I scroll up to the, the first number four, so we, no, no, no. That when we take out number four, all other documents relied upon, I know that's, I know we wanted to do that, but we didn't substitute anything else in it's dead. So we, we have now, I mean, they get their own complaint that they submitted, the parents do.
So, and yet, but also.
They get their own documents they submitted.
And the parents will get the written reply and any attachments.
Right, so whatever the, whatever this administrator has chosen to attach to their own response.
Yeah. But, but that becomes a part of the level one record.
Yeah.
Right, but at, at level one stage now, they're no longer getting documents relied upon, they're no longer getting any, any documents other than whatever the administrator chose to attach to his or her.
Technically, they never work.
So this, this is a good tension, but I, I think the idea is that the attachments to the level one response are the documents relied upon by the administrator.
Well, I mean, that, that is a great spirit to have, but that's not what it's required to be. If, if the administrator says, I made this decision, I'm gonna attach two emails that support me, but I'm not gonna attach three emails that don't, that, that is right now completely within the administrator's discretion.
Correct.
I mean, we're not requiring. I'm not, I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but this is, this means the parents don't, you know, they're not receiving essentially the evidence collected. But I think that's, I mean, that was the goal, I mean.
Right, we're not turning over the entire investigative file.
Right, okay. They're just.
Same reason, the parents aren't.
It's, it's basically within the administrator's discretion to disclose whatever documents support their decision at that case, you know.
So, and, and that is a tension.
It's like, it's a huge difference to the way I read the previous policy, but I mean,
Well.
I'm just raising it to make sure, I mean, I'm right at the table here, it's cool that, and we're, we're, that's the one.
The policy was written that way, but we never followed it that way, and that was our tension.
That's also true, right?
Exactly.
I, I get that.
We weren't turning everything over.
Yep.
And, and I mean, that, that's something worth discussing as a policy consideration. Do you want to require the district to hand over its entire investigative file? But I think that creates huge problems. I mean, and that's gonna, that's gonna kill an investigation. And if the real goal of this process is to provide the district with the information necessary to determine if there's a problem to fix it, then giving them the right to investigate without having to turn their entire file over, I think is critical. But I think that is a policy thing that you gotta sit in. And if we want to.
And then I wanna say something else later.
Go ahead.
Uh, well, so I'm, I'm good with all that, I think that's the right thing to do. And I know that I'm, I'm, I've, I've kind of talked about this before, but, you know, before we ever get to the grievance part of things, I'm trying to figure out how, where are we on, you know, the, the, the way a student or a teacher, whatever, can go through the confidential avenue to discuss these things. Because, you know, we talked about that after the, uh, our last level three hearing, um, about, you know, we recommend that, you know, we need to, we need to, we need a way that, you know, if, 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 if this coach or this, you know, teacher is, is, is wrong in me, I can't go to that person, and I'm scared to go to this person, and I'm trying to figure out where, where are we on what we talked about after that hearing?
So, uh, I think we're gonna handle that, and I wanna go, uh, zoom up a bit. David did a great job, I'm gonna give you credit, I have the name, but we have six, we have six points that we talked through. And I feel like everything people are mentioning are encompassed somehow in those six points. And so, uh, the, in the black is David, so I, if, if you don't mind, I'd like to just kind of go over the six points. And then, uh, that might give us far, something that might, might not solve any questions, but at least says, these are all things we talked, Lisa, Ryan and I talked about with the attorney. And so the first of the six is obviously timeliness. We sat, we went back and forth all the way around and felt like it was reasonable to do the fifteen days from the time that they knew or should be known that something happened. And let me zoom out again for the point, right? And the point of this is, you go all the way back to the constitution, it says citizens should have a right to, um, petition the government, right? And so this is, uh, the board's attempt to create a orderly process for people to do that. And so, um, uh, but it's twofold, right, it's not just kind of one-sided towards the parent. This is the board's attempt to create a process that administrators, who are very busy, can reasonably follow to do the due diligence they, they need to do, uh, to try to get it right the first time. And so the, so the balance is always, well, if you do more than fifteen days, does that help or hinder the process of trying to resolve the issue? You can go twenty, more than twenty seems long, that kind of thing. And so we all kind of said, well, fifteen makes sense. And then the next thing is, well, it should just take a while, somebody said, man, we started, we worked all the timelines, it might take three months. And so then you go to the next thing. So they file it, you got fifteen days to file it, and then the administrator has ten days to even have a face-to-face meeting with the person. And I know that seems like a long time. But I promise you, uh, when we met, I don't even remember that was, and that was five workdays ago. And we're just not talking about it. Because the world of, uh, that we're tasked to do, our mission in terms of educating kids, supporting teachers, and dealing with parent issues, it's very complex. And so ten days would be really just kind of two of those iterations. And that, obviously, that should be enough time for us. It might seem like a long time, but in our world, it's really not. If we, we did any shorter than ten, it would be, it would grind all of our, the rest of our work to a halt. And so then, but then, okay, great, there's another ten though. So I, I have ten days to meet with the person. Now, as I think about it, like, I gotta plan, I gotta understand, I gotta plan out my questions, I gotta figure out what, I'm, because I wanna make a good use of this parent's time. And so I gotta maybe even check on stuff, like, I, but before I ask them questions, I wanna know, be prepared. So that gives me ten days before we have that meeting. Then we have the meeting, I ask a lot of questions to make sure I understand, and then now I have ten days to write my written response. The parent might say, boy, that's a long time, Frank, what takes you so long? Well, number one, I have to run a district and do all these other things. But number two, now I have to kind of follow up on all the answers that I got from the face-to-face that I didn't have in the level one. And so, for example, I just had a level two day today, that was an hour. It was super helpful to meet them, I asked lots of questions, and I got answers to things that are never really evident in the level one or the level one response. So I feel like I understand that parents complain more. But now I have ten days from that to run down those leads, to do more work, to write it, by the way. Now, you know, it's not first draft, I gotta write it, and I gotta read it, I gotta make sure it's accurate. And so that's ten days before I give them a written response. And so, and that's just level one. So what might seem a while, the point is that, well, it's designed to make sure the administrators can do the job they're supposed to do, the job that the parents deserve. Anything shorter than that would be hard.
Well, on the timeliness issue, yeah, I have no concern about the fifteen and the ten, but on the timeliness, I had proposed, you guys look at that language about serial complaints. Did you guys have discussion about that?
We did, it's at the end. That would be combined.
Have you just not gotten to that yet?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's one, that's five.
Okay.
Okay. Now, documents to be considered, there's no new thing, we talked about that just now. We just decided to, um, delete it. But I think some of the issues are gonna come up in the next thing. There's an item through a hearing officer. So there's this tension about saying, hey, if at level one, if the principal's the person who made the decision that the parents mad about, why are you making that person a hearing officer? Why is that person doing the same investigation? And so there's two things to kind of, uh, that are helpful to consider. The first is, if there ever really is a bias, you know, where in the sense that the, the principal is the worst person to do it, the superintendent can always assign that to somebody else. It doesn't automatically have to do that, but if, if there, if there was a situation, we could certainly do that. The default, however, is that if you think about it, if I'm the principal and I made a decision, going through the formal process, having me investigated and respond, gives me a chance to fix it if I made a mistake. Which really, I mean, we're, we're going through the formal process, we wanna make sure we're not just kind of covering for ourselves. And so it's like, you give your stock principal here to make sure and really think about it. And then the second thing is, so you slow down and reconsider what you did. But then you also have to slow down and write a written response. And that written response, you better be able to justify what you're thinking is, or you'll discover, yeah, I made a mistake, and I will fix this or that. And so the idea of having the decision maker be the investigator at level one actually is helpful for both parties. But if we ever thought it was dangerous, the superintendent sure has the power to, to say it's not that person, if that makes sense.
And you know of every level one that's filed, it goes to you, they pick them up and then it's like.
And that's part, I have people wonder, why don't you post this online? Well, we have people come pick up the forms in person, uh, because it's a level of commitment, it's a chance to say, hey, can I help you with anything, what's going on? It's a, and, but it's also a chance for us to just kind of know, uh, that we need to attend to this. Because if people just download stuff online, you don't kind of know, and you can't believe.
Well, and friction sometimes is a good thing, because it really does weed out kind of just noise from signal, right? Like, we want actual signals, not just a bunch of noise.
Okay, sorry, right. Now, so there's, uh, we talked through this notion about, um, how do parents know, right, you didn't tell us, you should have told us, we should, we could file a grievance. Well, this goes back and forth. So essentially, going back to that informal process, right? Informally, and I think, uh, this hits Clay's point, the informal process is just, I have a complaint, I start with the assistant principal, I'm not satisfied, I go to the principal, I'm not satisfied, I go to Jimmy or Frank, I'm not satisfied, I go to Dana. All of that's informal. And so the idea is, you have at least four cracks to try and get somebody to say, I can help you, or I can resolve this. But at some point, if it hits me or Dana, we see that there's really no, this per, there's just a fundamental disagreement. Then you can say, well, let's start to form, I mean, there is a formal process if you'd like, and then they can go feed into that. And so the idea is that, um, I think we all agree that exhausting the informal process is best for everybody. And so if you start saying at the very beginning, you got a complaint, here's a.
No, that's just how we do everything.
Starts with bottom.
Yeah, I think informal is the best way, because then, A, you're not having to do all this, right? If we can fix it there.
Hopefully, yeah.
But my, my only concern is how can that, is there a process where the person can remain confidential?
So that's, that's on, that's a kind of a side issue, because this is just that, we're already in the grievance, so right now, let's just stick to this.
Anyway, so that's where we settled about the notion of, well, number one, it is posted in the handbook, I get people don't know that. But the other thing is, uh, we, we need to keep pushing people up. And so the idea is like, well, who else can I, typically, it goes like this, well, who else can I talk to? And then that's when you gotta say, what's the principal? Now, in general, they should never say me until it's the principal, you gotta kind of give every level a chance to, to solve it.
Well, and principals get real frustrated with what's coming to me first.
Oh, for sure.
And a lot of folks come to me first, and, you know, I have to always push back to the teacher level, y'all. Like, that's where it should start, is the communication, the teacher, the coach, the employee. So I, I think that's the only important thing to understand.
Consolidation of complaints, uh, as we read more closely, um, it's clear, it's clearer that the board and the parent have the obligation to consolidate when needed. And so, but it's not, um, what's the word, it's not required. So if you guys say, you know what, these are all similar, we're gonna consolidate them and hear them, you can do that. But the kind of, the primary function for this is like, if you have a, a parent who files a grievance today, two more days later, they file another grievance about a similar thing, a third grievance on a similar thing, and then that's kind of like, well, let's just consolidate all those, it makes sense, because you'll never get through the process. So we felt like, like we didn't have to change anything there, it just kind of made sense.
Wait, aren't you proposing added language there, though?
No, we thought, because the.
No, that's David's suggestion, should be considered.
Yeah, the, the red is our conversation, sorry. And by the way, we could do.
Okay, so this does go to the question I'm raising, right, with the series. So the, the concern I had, I can't tell right there if it's being direct, but the concern I had was that we, in the, in the grievance that we dealt with, where there was a series of complaints, we had the discussion of, well, then how do you determine timeliness in a series? I don't think that this, I can't tell.
And Ryan, you can fill in too, because what I gathered from hearing and seeing earlier was, the struggle that we had was, we had a pandemic in the middle of all. And that was the biggest struggle. And so then the question becomes, do you rewrite policy because you're worried about another pandemic? Or do you just make sure our policy's nice and tight and efficient, which is Frank said on the administration. Or do you just make sure our policy's nice and tight and efficient, which is Frank said on the administrative board?
No, I understand that, I, I, I was just trying to figure out, under the existing language, where we say, you know, parents shall not file serial complaints arising from a, a series of events, that they could have been addressed in a previous complaint. I mean, we're saying, you must wait till the end of the series, and then, at the same time, saying you can't wait till the end of the series, you know, because if you wait till the end of the series, fifteen days has passed.
We, we don't say that you can't wait till the end of the series, in the timeliness part of it, we say, a series of events. And just like we held in our grievance, and we've established, this is the way we interpret it as a board, we're gonna be pretty relaxed as to that series of events.
And by that, as a level two of administrator, I learned from that.
Cause we, we reversed the district's decision on timeliness, because we thought that they had restricted that language of a series of events too much.
I feel like y'all are saying the opposite things on how we're gonna do this going forward, cause I, I agree with both of you.
You're saying.
But are we, are we going to say, we're never gonna do that again, because that was a unique situation? Or are we gonna say, we're gonna always do that again, this end of the series, we're gonna always toll the limitations period until the very end? I mean, so to me, that language was what tripped me up the most, so I guess that's why I'm, I mean, if we're not making any edits to it, then we're back to where we started in my mind of, you know, when does, when does the fifteen days start when a series is going on?
So I think, yeah.
And tweaking that language.
I think that's not a question you can answer in policy.
Right, I think that's gonna be a fact-by-fact basis of what is a series of events, because if you say, a series of events, the last event starts the formal deadline. And you, what happens when some student realizes they've blown the deadline, and so they manufacture a new event in order to resurrect the past up, and that's what you deal with all the time on continuous torts. You know, so you're gonna have to have, there, and, and.
Well, one proposal is you can just delete that whole paragraph about series, because we're not having problems with parents doing serial complaints.
Well, I thought, I thought serial complaints was, the point was consolidation, not serial.
Well, but we also have a timeliness issue.
Oh, dude.
Serial events, we have the consolidation, and we have timeliness issues.
And Ryan, on the fifteen days, it doesn't say what, what you were saying it says about, it doesn't mention series there.
I thought we.
No, I, I don't think it does, that's what I recall.
Can you show us your line, which is this is timeliness, is this the right?
So Stacy, you think it's at timeliness, right, not at consolidation?
I think, I think that, the, the intent of that paragraph is to force parents to consolidate their complaints. I think the result of it is that it leaves our policy uncertain on, are we, how are we judging in fifteen days? And so, I mean, one, one proposal is you just delete the paragraph on consolidation. Yeah, that's right, yeah, that makes me a little nervous. Okay, so then another, another, um, proposal is, you know, you, you say, the fifteen day, you know, this, a series of events is not going to toll the period, or another fucking series is.
So this is, uh, this is timeliness, and it doesn't mention series.
Yeah, but go to the deadlines for filing this part.
Page four.
I think it's down.
Page four, that right there, right?
Within fifteen days, right in the middle there, first new or three, you should have known. You're right, Stacy, we oughta add in that first.
Is it sufficient just to make it a plural, decisions or actions?
Cause it, Ryan, if we add series, though, I, I think that, I'm, I'm concerned what you said, I mean, we're making it again, kinda open-ended, so.
Well, maybe we just have to leave it this way, and have to do their fifteen days based on that first, I don't know.
So I would just remind y'all, that this, what we have in writing is based on what, the, all the school districts in Texas, you know, have used. I mean, this is like, has the model language at this point, so I, I get a little nervous, like.
I, I agree with that, but we also had our counsel tell us that this was drafted skewed for the district just to make a nice record to go to T D A.
Well, I, I disbelieve it, I don't think that's what she said, I was there.
That's exactly what she said.
The, the skewed part, I think, is a little, uh, uh, less objective in the way she framed it. Cause it's like I said, it's designed to make it, uh, based on what T D A requires when it goes to their level. The, the records of that, that's what she was saying, so I, I mean, Lisa, you could weigh in on that if you want.
Well, my hesitation is about the consolidation piece, one of those, because I feel like that protects us a little bit, that the, uh, if you just make that whole actions or decisions, doesn't that get it? I mean, you could say in no event, you know, you could say a series of events must be consolidated, but in no event, uh, you know, should a complaint be filed more than thirty days after the conclusion of the lawsuit, you know, you can.
David.
Sorry, David.
I cannot, I do think that, um, the attorney, which she.
Wait, wait, Lisa, Lisa, sorry, sorry to interrupt, but Brian just made a good point, we probably shouldn't discuss legal advice in open session. So that was my mistake, so.
Thanks.
Okay, I understand, that's what I was gonna weigh in on, so.
Yeah.
Dave.
So, I think part of the tension here sometimes is encouraging the complainant about what is your act, what is the actual thing underlying your complaint? Because sometimes they're gonna point to something that's like, three weeks ago, but you could kinda coach them along and say, well, but you could actually complain about the decision that somebody made yesterday. And it's all related to each other. Um, and so I just, I, I kinda feel like making those two things plural gives the administration the room, and us the room, to really try to help resolve the issue of timeliness in, in, in favor of getting good results, like, not efficient results, but good results. Cause I mean, honestly, in some of the complaints that have come before, it was almost like, they needed a little bit of help identifying the thing they were complaining about. It's like, oh no, you could have picked something else, and we, and you would have gotten here just fine. And we, and we would have dealt with the exact same issue that honestly, we do need to deal with. So, I, I feel like making it plural gives everybody the flexibility to kinda get to that place, provided the culture is set that we're trying to resolve issues, and not just keep the things out the door.
All right, all right, I, I agree with that, but personally, I'd take out or with reasonable diligence should have, because that is very, um, objective.
That's kinda an important legal term of art, though.
It's a favorite of the parent.
Yeah, and, I mean, in any.
I strike that every time.
In any time period, you want to.
I, I, I think that's an excellent suggestion. By Dave, making it plural, nothing bad.
Is that like that?
Yep.
Wow, okay, all right.
Oh, and then just the whole point of, that what we call it.
Yeah.
Uh, internally, we will make it a point that's formal, we will always refer to it as a grievance, even though the policy and the legal uses the terms interchangeably, it is confusing to, uh, parents, I guess. And so I'll call it a formal grievance or a grievance. Thanks.
Well, go.
Thank you all.
Hey, Clay, our next thing we will take up is, cause we have discussed the confidential avenue, but that, that is a bigger policy, there are all sorts of issues.
Right.
So we'll, we'll, we'll consider that, this is tightening it up for right now, and we'll work on that.
No, I, my, my question is, when?
It's always your question, you.
I'm here, I'm here today.
By next month's.
But you're not the most important person this week?
All right, so I need to know, am I gonna put this line with the formal?
Everyone feel good about putting on formal, getting an active?
All good.
And, so why, okay, well, so why, I, I like Dave's point about calling it grievance, why, why don't we just switch it? It's because we're trying to be consistent with.
Well, so, uh, as a very practical matter, every time there's a past due update, they will keep with their normal language.
Okay, all right.
And so it's just like, yeah, they're paying, they're gonna change it, and they use that.
All right, so we're gonna move on to, everyone good with moving on?
Yes.
Look, just so that everyone understands, this next one, instructional resources, that's the library stuff, right? This is nothing more than just an introduction of the issues. This is something we're gonna be sitting on for a while, you've probably heard a little bit about it. So we're gonna kinda get a little bit of an overview, so that we can think about it, we're not gonna be hashing out the policy and issues. Is that good for everyone?
So, yeah, in other words, this is an F Y I.
So listen.
Yeah.
Yeah, listen. But then I can tell you afterward, and just go right and do my question.
Okay, just go straight to Dave.
Just go straight to him.
No, this will be good, to get it back.
And Jim, our, our new books are.
Please, no.
Yeah, so, uh.
They're tied onto the resume.
We'll, we'll explain as a setup, uh, thank you all for giving us this opportunity. We're gonna do an overview of the legal policy and the local policy, that's why I'm here. Uh, it involves libraries, that's why Brian's here, he supervises librarians. And, uh, uh, instructional materials, very largely is Jimmy's book, which is our section, and so we'll contact him this little. Uh, and so the first caveat I wanna tell you is, all of, all of our slides that have a legal blurb at the top of the letters, that's, we just copy and paste it in from the, the actual legal policy, but rather than just pull up the policy and show you, we thought we'd kinda chunk it out, so you could focus on sections. Um, but if you ever wanted to see it as a whole, you can just go online and check it out. So the first thing is, we all know that anything that says legal in parentheses is the law of the land, and districts don't have options around it. Anything that says local isn't our percy to change, but of course, you would consult with your parents prior to doing that. And so EF legal is the part that talks about this, and it maintains that the district, um, has discretion in what it puts in its libraries. But it does, however, outline this kind of, uh, line to be careful not to cross, is that this discretion should be exercised in a manner consistent with the First Amendment. Now, the next kind of blurb, the paragraph, actually comes from a nineteen eighty-two Supreme Court case.